All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We have a roll call and ask for a motion to approve the agenda for the evening.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Is anybody here for the public forum that's not related to the
You get a list where it's checked down there.
What's that?
They're checked to speak at public forum.
Oh, okay. All right, Dennis DeCarroll.
Will he just speak for a couple of minutes or what do you want to do?
Uh, one minute.
One minute, okay, that's good. My name is Dennis DeCarroll from Harmony and I attended the town hall meeting last week, which I want to thank everybody for participating. I think it was a good turnout. Unfortunately, talking to people since the town hall meeting, I feel there's still a lot of suspicion. And whether that's justified or not, it's not the issue, but I think I would just encourage the council members to address that suspicion. We have doing as transparent as you can be going forward. And I think also, I attended the planning and zoning meeting prior to last week's meeting. We didn't have, I think Jesse had to go out on a call, so we didn't have a full quorum there to do anything. But they're going to be getting work on the ordinances that would apply to putting a data center there. And I think it's very important that that be done transparently and that you take an active role in soliciting input from the committee. I mean, you're in a tough situation because data centers are subject to a lot of adverse coverage at this time. And although some of that coverage is not applied to, I think, what is being proposed here, you still need to address it and make a real effort.
You can finish, you can finish if you just have a couple of words to say, but just
No, that's fine. I want to thank everybody and I just hope we all put a good effort into it and you make sure that your community knows what's going on.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Ann Lyons? Hi, Ann.
Hi, good evening. I'm a broken record, but you must speak up. You must speak up. People couldn't hear you last week and when you're broadcast online, it's terrible. We don't know what you're saying. And what Dennis said is so true. You have to be clear about everything. If you mumble and whisper between yourselves and act like you don't want people to hear, they're not going to like it. And that's what it feels like. I mean, last week, there were many people who said they were really glad to see the turnout, but they couldn't hear. So, speak up.
Thank you. Julie Little?
Hi. I just wanted to say that I think Harmony is in a great position to be able to do some wonderful things and make progress and that we have more power now than we ever will have. And so I just want to ask that before you annex something, before you agree to any contract or entertain any bids, that you write your zoning ordinances and present them to residents and hear feedback and, you know, listen to fears and build trust and address concerns. And I ask that the ordinance requires an environmental impact statement and no NDAs and that nothing be done until you've taken all the steps needed to ensure the health and welfare of our whole community. And only with that attitude and intention in place, what could I support the progress that you're talking about? So, that's what I'm asking. And I think this can be done and I think it's a great opportunity. And data centers aren't going anywhere. They want us. They want to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Tim Little?
I wasn't really prepared to say anything, but I thought, you know, anyway. You know, my, I had a couple of thoughts after the meeting last week and it was, I saw the benefit to my energy, I saw the benefit to Dairyland. I didn't see a whole lot of benefit to the citizens of Harmony and certainly not to the benefit of people, you know, not in the city of Harmony, but just outside of it where it can be affected dramatically by annexing this land and turning it from agricultural to industrial. And I'd like you really, as the previous person said, my right, make it clear, where's the benefit to the citizens of Harmony and surrounding communities to this? Because I see a lot of downsides to data centers. I'm really worried about skyrocketing electricity rates.
Thank you. And Betsy?
Good evening. I'd just like to kind of start with a short little anecdote that was kind of brought forward this past summer. So Jeff Bezos that lives in Beverly Hills in California, he currently has a 30-foot hedge that goes around his property despite the fact that the city ordinance in Beverly Hills actually is only having a three-and-a-half-foot tall fence to allow, on the front yards, to allow for folks to see the estates and things along the hills. And he's currently, since 2020, been eating a $1,000 monthly fee from the city of going against that zoning ordinance. And I guess, like, I'm excited at the prospect of having some kind of industrial zone, whether it be a data center or otherwise, in the city of Harmony. That's exciting. But while we're going into a zoning of doing for something industrial, really taking into consideration that we're writing the ordinances before contracts are signed, that would prevent this, you know, usage of like, oh, it's just a fee, it's like practically rent of that larger companies can eat a fee like that, you know, that we're thinking of those kind of things ahead of time.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I saw for the public forum.
I have a question. I just wondered why we're going to go to the time and expense of annexing another piece of property when our industrial park we have isn't even full yet.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Just on the MMU A safety contract, we're going with the, what they had, what we went with before?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. And it's a 5% increase from last year.
Correct.
All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for the annexation ordinance number 151.01. And the first comment will be Katrina? Okay. Yeah, I thought anybody on the list wanted to speak at the public hearing.
There's a checklist on the right-hand side that was for the ones that wanted to speak. So the ones that checked on the right-hand side next to their name are the ones that wanted to speak.
Yeah.
Which are the ones that
Yeah, I thought that meant during the public forum, so.
Okay.
Yep, all right. Okay, well, the public hearing is open.
I think we could get
Good evening, Mayor Donnie, members of the city council. My name's Brian Cranbyer and I'm the president and CEO of My Energy Cooperative.
Does that one on?
Yes.
It's on, Brian.
Test, test. All right, I'll try to speak up a little louder here, too. I, first of all, would like to commend you on the public information meeting. I thought your staff did an excellent job and we received, I thought, some excellent comments from the audience members and a lot of feedback after the meeting. Definitely want to stress the importance of the public input and certainly agree with some of the comments that were made here tonight on transparency and in working through this process for the good of all the benefits to the city of Harmony also and added tax base and revenue to your municipal utility that hopefully will maintain lower electric rates in the future. We would certainly recommend annexation of this process. And would also like to stress that, again, this property has not been purchased and also to the point that we don't have a particular individual or project that's going there. That will be part of the process and working through planning and zoning and determining what is the best project for the city of Harmony. With that feedback that we got that night, again, certainly appreciate all of the feedback. We've kind of put together a concept and sometimes that is easier to understand than maybe just some general comments. And Kent Whitcomb is with me tonight and also Chris Geeson from Darrell and Power to talk a little bit about a conceptual plan on maybe what this project would potentially look like and be able to address all of the concerns that it isn't a project that has considerable water usage. It would be closed loop or air-cooled. There'd be screening and other things just to view. So Kent, I'll let you maybe talk a little bit about the project and the concept drawing.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. Essentially, what we came back from that informational meeting was just what we were hearing from people was, okay, is this system going to take up 60 acres? How much water use is going to be here? How much energy use is going to be? So we made up a artist rendition, which I passed around, you guys all have in front of you. There is one circulating amongst the public there, too. Again, this is an artist rendition. This is very abstract. It's not, as we go down the road, there'd be something if we did more developed here. But this is kind of brought in a lot of comments that we got at that informational meeting. So we would look at proceeding here with commercial lots upfront on that property, something that I don't know how many there would be in there, but we dedicate that section for it. And then another thing, the screening, we'd have screening located around the entire thing. And then there was some talk about renewable energy, how to implement the renewable energy as well. We have it on the top third here. That might be something that's in the middle there, too. But we are looking to possibly add solar in there as well, just to power that and also maybe be a buffer between that and the data center, the substation there, which would feed the system, and then the modular data center. Another big feedback we got is, okay, the hyperscale, okay, the edge centers. I know there was a lot of fear on seeing that coming to the community. So we really focused or we're looking to focus on more of a modular data center that would go in there or maybe a smaller edge facility that isn't going to tap into the aquifer, that isn't going to have a concern with resiliency there. So I just wanted, we just wanted to share this abstract, just so you guys have a little bit of an idea what our concept would be there. So, thank you. I'm going to pass this on to Chris for any more comments.
Thank you, councilman mayor. Yeah, like Kent mentioned, this is just an artist rendering, but kind of the underlying question is that we keep getting asked for opportunities to develop these types of projects. Harmony keeps coming up on the radar as a high potential community that could benefit from, or take advantage of one of these types of projects and utilizing the excess electric capacity that is here already, utilizing some of the attractiveness of location between some of the hubs of large businesses in the region that would use data and need data storage, as well as some of the broadband infrastructure that's in that area. I really would leverage some of the assets that are already here and be able to put it in the context of something that could be controlled and packaged for the city in something that would benefit from the city. And that's really what we're hoping to work with the city of Harmony so that whatever these types of projects might come forward, you can have the rules in place that fit Harmony, that fit for the community and that do provide a benefit that the council is able to direct. So we're happy to answer any questions or, you know, provide any input. And we really look forward to this as a partnership and an opportunity to work together for a win-win-win scenario. We don't want to bring a bad project to Harmony.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and questions. Several residents of Harmony have contacted me. One of the, I thought there were some, in my opinion, somewhat irrational fears of a large data center that isn't going to happen here. I thought you addressed the water concerns very well, very much to my satisfaction. Realizing some people might never be convinced or might never think there are any benefits from this. I see potential benefits in tax revenue and utility customers, and future business development. Some people said, why isn't Harmony looking for other types of businesses? And I would say, yeah, we're open and we're looking for other types of businesses. We hire CETA to direct our EDA efforts in town. And I think our EDA board has worked for years to bring in different businesses. Anywhere, we're open. We've had some come. They either don't find us a fit or we don't find them a fit. So we don't just accept anybody who wants to come in. The, one question I had was the potential of the noise. That being someone compared it to maybe other farm equipment or large, or traffic on a road or large fans. And that's, so sometimes in a farming environment, you have those noises, but they're not 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So if a modular data center comes in, they're air cooling, right, fans are going, is it perfectly within our scope and can they, can they address the noise issues to reduce it to a level that would be acceptable to our planning and zoning?
Yes, that would be something that you guys would have the right to do through your zoning code to set a decibel limit at, you know, a certain distance. Usually it's the property line. It has to meet, you know, thus and such decibel level and that's something you can measure and set. And that was one of the considerations we took when we identified this site as a potential is that it is in an industrial area, so noises are already there. Industrial uses are surrounding it. There isn't, you know, a neighborhood right next door, although that is something that some data centers do site next to, not that we're suggesting that be the case here. But the other thing would be just the ability to put screening, whether that's fencing, whether that's fencing and trees. I think we're, you know, suggesting we'd be open to whatever that might be. It's also a common issue with all of the projects that go forward that developers are expecting to put something up or address that in some way. If it's a closed-loop water system, that does drastically reduce noise as well. But the prospects that we're talking to, you know, noise is something that can be managed fairly well given the right setbacks, given the right screening, given the right direction from the city, so.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Maybe one, maybe one comment, Mayor Donnie, that, you know, the zoning process is probably going to be very important. I mean, it is going to be very important and that's why we'd like to work with the zoning board and putting the benchmarks to a project that the city desires and wants. And those that don't meet those benchmarks, then they aren't considered for a potential project here. And I think the obvious one that night was, was the water usage, that that is a concern and don't want it to be a drain on the community. So we make sure that that is included in the zoning ordinance, so that excludes that type of a project. So really, the zoning will really help us hone in on the type of project that we can market this to, to be able to move forward and the city is comfortable with and desire. So, thank you.
Just one more comment on Brian's thought. You know, the zoning changes will apply citywide, wherever there's an industrial zone. And so, you know, it would be more than just, you know, our property, too. So keeping that in mind for what would work best for the community, you know, set the right parameters and we're happy to help guide what those might be or provide that input, as you wish.
Ann?
You said that you see all kinds of advantages to this, but you didn't really say what. I understand tax benefits to us is, that's wonderful, but what else? I'm just curious how, I don't see what's so great about this for the city and its residents.
Yeah, well, I think we pointed to what the advantages are.
You did? What?
Yes. Utilization of the current facilities we have, our infrastructure. The more, the more infrastructure you have, the more and better you can utilize it, the more efficient it is. I'm not going to
It benefits my energy, it doesn't benefit us.
Well, that's, that's an opinion and you're, and you're welcome to that.
We're asking for help with that. You're not giving it to us.
I can address that, Mayor Donnie.
Okay.
And maybe clarification, and I probably need to do a better job of this, is that My Energy is a nonprofit electric cooperative that's owned by its members. And the city of Harmony is one of our members. They're a wholesale city. So we have one meter here, but the city is a member of My Energy. So we, in turn, through Darrell and Power Cooperative, provide electricity to the city of Harmony. The city of Harmony, in turn, has a retail municipal system that sells the electricity to all of its members, all the, all the people living in town. So your revenue base is really based on what you have for commercial accounts, residential accounts, the revenue that you generate to pay for the wholesale power bill from My Energy and Darrell and Power combined in our partnership. So if you have a user that maybe consumes more electricity and they consume it off-peak energy, there is potential revenue opportunity for the city of Harmony that will go to its enterprise fund to help maintain lower water rates, sewer rates, electric rates and other infrastructure that you would need. So this is kind of unique, is that this is a partnership between My Energy and the city of Harmony Municipal Electric Utility that we both benefit. So with that, what incurs is that it enables to help My Energy grow. It also helps the city of Harmony grow, mainly in generating additional revenue. And again, there was concerns on, you know, is this going to be a power strain on the city? This won't. This won't negatively impact the city on peak energy periods because the system that we'll be working with is mainly going to be operating in the off-peak hours is one of the critical times that we've, we've kind of targeted. But it will have its direct costs impacted directly. There will be no infrastructure costs that this project potentially would bear. And any wholesale power costs that it would bear would also not negatively impact the city. So it's mainly from the revenue and I did not address the property taxes. And I think there's some, some questions that there would be some added benefit. It's just how that's initially calculated and what the project would be, if it would be more modular or if there would potentially be like an edge brick-and-mortar type, type building and structure. There also would be some labor, potentially some people working, maybe not full-time, like five or six people. But I think what we've heard, depending on the project, either maintenance people working in town or potentially living in town, being able to maintain a facility like this, too, and hopefully other, other resources that would go with that. But that's just a pretty high-level overview. But again, it would be dependent on the type of data center that would be located here on all of the above.
And a potential side benefit, if there's roadfront property there that's available for commercial-type businesses, that's something that city EDA doesn't really have available. Those lots in our current industrial park are filled. Just one more, I see. So I see a lot of benefits and I think we've spelled those out. And I think My Energy and Darrell and have addressed some of the fears and concerns. And that's, that's what I hear. Linda?
Julie.
Julie, I mean, sorry.
You know, I hear what My Energy and Darrell and are saying and they're really knowledgeable and, you know, professional and have ideas about this. But I just wonder why you're at the table and none of the citizens are to be able to participate in this.
This is
Meeting with these guys. I mean, what about having a citizens' meeting?
I think we just had a citizens' meeting.
That wasn't citizens making presentations. These guys are selling us something. What about what the citizens think?
Stuart?
Stuart Moore. I'm a citizen, been here all my life. I've dealt with all three of these men, Brian, for 40 years. These are all three professional men. They're not selling us a piece of goods. They're all above water. City council is not trying to put anything under the rug here. Wide open.
Why should we be involved?
You are. You're right here.
Oh, really?
What do you expect?
Another advantage you're not taking or looking at is the contractors in town that would possibly be able to build this. Linda, do you realize that this could be a, probably a 500
It's baloney.
What is
Did you anybody work at Dollar General?
Well, when I was asked for it, we were so busy.
There's a
But that's employed, we have 10 employees. That's keeping 10 residents in harmony busy. And that, all in dollars, if we would get this project, are returned into the city many times over. And that's hard to measure, but that is a big, big deal.
And I'm not going to defend the Dollar General, but I would say there are benefits there. I've heard a lot of people talk about the negatives of a Dollar General, the big, large corporation, the profits going out of town. That happens with other businesses. I think just about every town of any size has businesses that the profits go out of town one way or another, and I mean the top-line profits. But the Dollar General's paying a pretty large property tax. They're using our utilities. They're hiring some people. It makes more business for the restaurants, the QuickTrip, which is a, the profits for QuickTrip go out of town, but I think a lot of people appreciate QuickTrip. And a lot of people feel like, well, Harmony wouldn't want to lose a QuickTrip. But yet, if we didn't have a QuickTrip, I feel like a lot of people would be very opposed to one coming in. So that's just my opinion. Yes?
Just a side question, because I know since you guys like mentioned like the possibility of like having like solar or something like that on the site. I know obviously it would be a little conjecture based on like, you know, what lodges you have compared to like the lot size and things. Do you have any idea of what even a gross estimate would be of like what percentage of the power that they would be fueled by would be from its, from its own sites, solar or whatever, maybe?
Yeah, the solar that we've looked at, kind of on the conceptual drawing, is that My Energy has an opportunity with Darrell and Power that we can cite a percentage of our total electric percentage of our total electric load in places that, that can handle that. And with, with the data center-type load here, that would give us the ability to interject that solar into the, the transmission line that we run into challenges with, there's limited places on our system, being very rural, that we can put, say, two or, or four megawatts of electricity. So, this would give us the opportunity. And, and I think we also mentioned it at the information meeting, is that we may only need twenty acres for this project. But in working with Jeff Soma, he owns the entire project or the, the plot. And he didn't wanna sell just twenty acres to us and then have to worry about what to do with the other. So, that's why he, he wanted to sell all sixty acres and why we got the option on that. We were looking at, again, from public feedback, they were saying that, feed, our general members were saying that they wanted My Energy to, to be more of a leadership role in this because they, they wanted to help maintain control. And, and that's where we thought that working with the city, with the, the residential frontage lots, may be an asset because some of the areas in the current industrial park that we've looked at, we couldn't put solar in because of potential sinkhole issues. So, this would free up some new opportunities for, for, for development. But, but the solar project really isn't tied to the, the data center. But the bogey that we have out in front of us that we just talked to our legislators this morning about is 2040, we have to be a hundred percent clean energy. And there's debate on, on how that is, renewable energies, battery, there's discussion on potential small modular nuclear, but there's a nuclear moratorium right now in the state of Minnesota. So, that right now is not a possibility. It would have to be more renewable energy. So, I think right now, when you take a look at My Energy as a whole, which Harmony is a part of, we are about forty-seven percent, the energy is renewable already because we have a thousand members that, that have distributed generation. And then we have done nine megawatts of projects throughout our system where we can do that and, and we're looking to do more. And we're like, well, if we acquired this land for a data center, we had an extra twenty or thirty acres, this would be a natural site to be able to locate some more and our additional renewable energy to benefit all of us because we're required on behalf of the City of Harmony to meet that 2040 requirement in partnership with Darrell and Power. So, good, good question.
My Energy's planning for the future rather than planning for this data center system?
Right.
And being, myself, being on the EDA for twelve years, we did a lot of projects that cost us a lot of money, the city. We bought land. We have given tax benefits. We have done infrastructure projects. When we look at My Energy and Darrell and, and people wanna say, oh, it's just for them, I would tell you, we have that Darrell and Service Center on the edge of town, and it's one of the larger tax bases, I think, on the books. They hire a lot of people in the area. Then you've got My Energy has the phone company, the bluff-
Computer Works.
Computer Works. And with more than several employees, you probably know a number. I know it's more than ten, a lot. So, I mean, we would bend over backwards to get a business like that to come into town. And it would, it would cost us money, a project like this, where My Energy, a, a partner of ours in town, is going out and purchasing the property. And we would need to annex this before they can really entertain the businesses that might come. And then we have the option, when a business wants to come to this property because of, it's in the city limits, planning and zoning, we can describe exactly, we can address the problems that a lot of people think these types of businesses might have.
Roxanne. Roxanne, enter.
I'm Roxanne Johnson, and my husband Bill and I own my own family, so I'm here kind of learning all of this. I missed the last meeting with actually for you. But I just wanna say that I think that part of this is it's so new of an idea. In defense of the citizens, the Harmony that are concerned, all of us need to learn what it's about, what it does. And you hear a lot of stories from other communities, and some of those data centers are huge, and they are dumping water, and they are maybe not as friendly as they should be to the community. And any community should be concerned about what's coming in. We have a beautiful community here, and we like to keep it that way. And I know our council would like to. And I would be sure that Darrell and, and My Energy, because you are part of this community with us, and you're members of yours in one direction and direct way. So, as a neighbor rattling around that, of course, we are concerned of water usage and runoff or some, you know, discharges of anything that could have a chemical or any impact to the environment. And that, that is something that was legitimately affecting what you're building and what's going on. So, I don't wanna discredit anybody's concern here because it is a concern. This is an unknown problem. And when you're speaking hypothetically, we don't, we don't hypothetically, we could be that. That's where people's intent is to walk. And we don't like, oh, what's the limitations? And that goes back to our zoning. We're a small town. It's unbelievable to think that we would have to crack the zoning in place to protect the citizens of what we don't want. How, how, we don't want it to get this fair. We don't want that. So, there is concern for that. So, I think the questions, I'm just listening, I think all of this really great because they think it opens a great discussion of are we protecting? Because the council's job is to protect the citizens, the taxpayers first, and to do the best and to bring in revenue, because people never like to say everything too high. So, it's, it's, you know, it's a double-edged chair. And, and I'm thinking, you know, everybody here cares about Harmony. And I don't just wanna look next to something that's a dumping ground and do that to our city. And I don't think that My Energy and Darrell and do either. But I do think we need to have some controls, which goes in the zoning, that puts those safety guards in place for us and for the developers agreement, or whatever else may be in place, to have somebody who's working on paper so legally, we're not fighting expensive charges if it gets to that. And we don't wanna be one of those towns in paper.
Thank, thank you, Roxanne.
I just have one other question. Is this anything that would add another substation over in that area? Any need for it? If you need to open another substation-
There'd be another substation located on that property or in the Darrell?
Either located on that parcel or located on the Darrell and parcel. That's one reason it's kinda would be located in that area, just because that's where the transmission line is.
Okay.
That would also be the added benefit of the solar in the back that I forgot to mention. If we're building a substation, we could very easily, for the data center, include a, like an additional bay on the side of it to feed into the solar, right, to do that. So, we wouldn't have two substations. We utilize the existing new infrastructure for tying the solar into that, an entire project. So, good question.
And, well, just on Roxanne's comments, it's like, well, yes, the planning and zoning and the city council are tasked with making sure any business that wants to come into town, whether it be a data center or any other kind of business, that any potential problems are looked at and addressed at that time. But we really can't address a problem when we don't have a business yet. But the planning and zoning will put those parameters in place. As far as several of the items you mentioned are governed by the state of Minnesota, water runoff, if a, if a, if a building of any size and parking lot was put in, My Energy would probably need to put a retention, retention pond in. So, those, those things are addressed, not just by the City of Harmony, but Fillmore County has some rules, state of Minnesota has rules. Yeah.
But my point is, but it might be allowed in Minnesota, but we might not want it allowed here. So, that's the planning and zoning. And city councils, you know, should have this zoning in place that protects us. And because you make a good point, you could put limitations on the limits somewhere else, but I think the limitations are looking at limitations that protect the column and not a wear anyone else. That's important.
If, if the city doesn't annex the property, they, we can't put any requirements on it. Right? Dennis?
Yes. Regarding the annexation, because that's supposed to be the topic of-
Yes. Correct.
And I did talk to Jesse the other night. And he talked about the fact that if you annex the property, if they decide that there's no development going forward, they decide not to buy it. Or what?
We can, we can un annex, we can un annex it, yes. We can reverse it.
Anexation at this point doesn't commit us to-
Correct.
Correct, yep.
I think that's the big takeaway for tonight. We're talking strictly about the annexation of this property. And if that project falls, then it can be disconnected from the city again, turned into farmland, whatever. Well, we'll make, it will be farmland until this project comes off the ground, if it does. So, that's the issue before us tonight as a council. I would encourage, I like the comments. I'm glad everybody had the opportunity to speak their, their mind and that, and their concerns. If you have concerns regarding planning and zoning, reach out to one of the planning and zoning members. Miles is back here, me, Eric, Rod Johnson, and Jimmy Strozak are on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So-
Yeah, Jim. Yeah. Sorry.
So, reach out to us if you have any idea or concerns. Our meetings are held the first Wednesday of the month. Come and attend. We'll have public forum. We'll do the things. That way you guys can still be heard and we can still move forward with what we need to move forward with. Currently, we don't have any zoning ordinances that say anything about data centers. So, we're starting from ground zero, and that's where we need to move forward from. This is just the first piece in that call. And then the next step is planning and zoning, for sure.
That sounds really good. I just heard about a lawsuit in Michigan where the town decided against having a data center and the data center company is suing the town. Probably heard about that too. So, I'm just really leery about making any kind of steps and commitments without first having a-
Those, those planning and zoning meetings are public, just like this is public. So-
That's great. Yep.
Very good. All right. I think that was at least our allotted time, maybe a little longer, but that was fine. Good discussion. Thank you, everybody. At this time, I, we'll close the public hearing and continue on with our new business. You want what?
Do we need to make a motion on the annexation?
At some point, yep. We could do that now. I guess the public hearing's closed. I'd entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 151.0.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 151.01. Any further discussion?
I just got one question to Greg. So, the current owner is agriculture. If this gets annexed, does it change his taxes if it stays agriculture? Or does that-
He'll pay a portion to the city. So, I don't know whether that will increase the taxes or not. But I know sometimes that's a concern people have when they have agricultural ground within municipalities. So, that question would be more precisely answered by the assessor's office. And that would be one reason to, if it was an issue, that would be an argument for reversing it if it didn't get developed.
Okay. But we can reverse it at any time.
Yep. Land can be detached from the city, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And when we annex it, it doesn't change it from ag to industrial. Because there is other ag property in, in the city limits.
I'll make sure I understood it right.
The rest of the tax question, yes, the assessor.
The use of the land isn't changing. It's still gonna be-
Yep.
Classified agricultural, Steve said. But I, I can't say that the taxes don't change. That, that would be-
Yeah, there may be, there may be some increase because it's city, not township.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a handout from Bill Spencer. Are you ready, Bill?
I am.
Just got here.
Yeah.
Thanks, Roxanne. All right. We are ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate you putting me wherever I got put on the agenda. I thoroughly appreciate that. Well, that's great. I came from another council meeting up in Stewartville, and they had three public hearings. So, I was behind all those. So, I appreciate, appreciate the public hearings, actually, tonight. It gave me a little time to drive down here. So, in front of you, you should have a packet or somewhere, may not be colored, but just kinda give you a little idea. I'm gonna give you a little presentation on the public transit tonight. I, I know I stopped down here last year about this time as well. So, just kinda giving you a little bit of update. You're a member of a, of a much larger rural transit, public transit in the state of Minnesota. Just kinda gives you an idea in this little graphic here of how many different public transits, just under forty different rural public transits in the state of Minnesota. Just to give you an idea of our service area, I found out how big it really was, going from Dodge Center this morning to Stewartville to Harmony, and it goes all the way over to Caledonia. We operate twelve buses in about twenty communities in southeastern Minnesota, and we provide public transit for each one of those communities. You're a part of one of our merged buses, which is the Chatfield Harmony Bus. And that's a very big corridor that it provides public transit in that corridor. Just to kinda give you an idea of what we would charge to go for rides within those areas, it's two dollars to ride within, like the community of Harmony, if it went from Harmony to Harmony, or Chatfield to Chatfield, two dollars. If it goes within a community within eight miles, it's a four-dollar charge. And if it goes a little bit farther than that, currently, we only have one rate, which is six dollars. We probably will be relooking at that for those communities that are a little bit farther than thirty miles from a major area that they wanna go to. For example, if somebody in Harmony currently, if they wanted to go to Rochester, they'd only charge them six dollars. So, a very good bargain. That's probably gonna change with some of my proposals that I'll, I'll share with you tonight. We're a part of a nonprofit, SEMCAC is the one that actually is our fiscal agent, but we are funded by MINDOT. So, currently ninety-five percent of our funding comes from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. So, yourselves and everybody in this room actually help pay for your public transit in the rural areas. The other five percent comes from local matches. Local matches are from communities like yours and the other communities that we serve in southeastern Minnesota, and also the counties that we serve as well. Just to kinda give you some idea of the passengers that we haul, I did have a, a graphic there of the information that provides how many actually rides in the community of Harmony. So, just for the month of August, a hundred and seven people utilized your service here in Harmony for a total of about three hundred and thirty-six rides in 2024. And that's just in the, the community of Harmony. The entire Chatfield Harmony Bus hauled about two thousand five hundred and fifty in 2024. And currently, the last time we reported to MINDOT, about sixteen seventy-five. And that's in that entire corridor between Cass, or between Chatfield and- So the hours aren't the most ideal. What I'm going to be proposing, if I can get the data to support that, is I'd like to bring you up to the same coverage that we provide most of our other customers, which is seven in the morning until five in the evening. What that will enable us to do is provide much more transportation for those individuals that may work during the day or want to go on those trips like into Rochester. So that's kind of one of the things that I would like to build. I do have some MINDOT data that supports this area as a underserved transit area, as well as several other communities along the corridor between Chadfield and Harmony. The last thing that I would like to propose tonight is, actually, two things. One is I would really like the support of the council to do a survey, a community survey, and we would like to do that over the next 15 to 30 days, and that is trying to get as many people in the community of Harmony to participate in such a survey. It's going to be a very informal survey, a Google-type survey, something that's inexpensive, something that I can afford to, to put out there. So it's free. Those are the kind of, that I really like. But what that does do is I'm really relying on you as council members. I was a member of a council for 10 years, so I know the exposure that you have as a council member to other members of the community to try to get their input, and input is very important if we want to make a very good decision. I rely a lot on data to do a lot of the things that I do or have done. Input from the individuals. So I would like to solicit your help in promoting that survey. I should have that survey up and running by the end of this week or beginning of next week. It's going to be very, very simple, no more than 10 questions. I prefer five questions because if you get any more than that, people lose interest really quickly. But the main questions that I would like to ask individuals is, one, is that something that we want to expand in the community of Harmony? Two, would you like some sort of service that would be going into a larger community like Rochester or possibly even just next door to, to Spring Valley or Preston or things like that to provide those services? So very simple. The last thing that I would like to talk about, we'll open it up to any questions that you may have, is, like I said, MINDOT does provide us services in the 2 and over 90% of our operating budget and 5% local. I am asking most of the counties to provide that local match for the operating. However, I am coming to the communities to ask for infrastructure. Infrastructure is the buses that we ride around in or deliver your precious cargo to their destinations. We just purchased one for the Chadfield Harmony Bus, so it's all bought and paid for right now, but in five years, we're going to be looking to upgrade that to a new bus. So we're asking those communities to participate. When we first started rolling Els Transit back in 2013, we had 12 communities that did commit to making those capital investments. That is one of the things that is fairly expensive over time, and we want to make sure that we provide that safe transportation for your citizens. So that ask, that I'll be asking this community is, is proportional to the actual use that you're currently using. So about just under $1,500 a year is what we're asking for that support. Just to kind of give you an idea of how much one of those buses costs, currently, we operate 22 to 18 passenger buses. They started out, when I started out as director, which was two years ago, at $96,000. Today, that same bus cost me $239,000. So it's just incredible how much those buses have gone up, just in the time that I have served as director here. One of the things that I also want you to know is that we are very looking at efficiency as much as we possibly can, so we're looking at taking those 18 to 22 passenger buses and downsizing those to 10 passenger vans. Those 10 passenger transit vans are going to have the same head height as our buses do, and also are going to be able to carry the same amount of individuals that may be mobility challenged. So we'll have a lift in the back of the bu, the van, and we'll be able to accommodate it at least two wheelchairs. So we want to use those 10 passenger vans in, in the smaller communities for more efficiency. However, we are going to keep some 18 to 22 passenger buses, because there are some communities during peak times that do require, in fact, one of our communities requires two buses within 45-minute time period, so they haul a lot of kids in that particular community in a short period of time. So what we will do is we will station those four buses strategically around our, our area, so if a, a community does have a need at a particular time, we can swap out that van for a bus. So with that, I will open it up to any questions that you may have. One last, one last thing, is some of the other data that you'll see in there, SEMCAC transportation is a part of a much larger transportation system. We also operate the volunteer driver program, which is also in your community as well. We also operate an STS services van. The STS services van is for individuals that may be mobility challenged, that need to get to medical appointments, just like the volunteer driver program provides those. Just a little FYI, about 10,000 rides were given to individuals in the volunteer driver program, which was incredible over last year, and those rides were to mainly medical appointments. So those volunteers really, really do a lot of good for our community. Any questions that you may have? I will entertain any questions that the council may have. Mr. Mayor?
Anybody have any questions?
What do you think the rate, that extended distance from $6 to like Rochester? What are you looking at?
We're, we're looking at that number as well. It's going to be either in the $8 to $10 range, probably, so I would say for a $20, $20 round trip fee, what we'd like to do is, is narrow it down to one day a week that we would do it, so a particular day or two days that we would make that express run into like a larger community. We obviously could not afford to do that every single day, so we want to try to get as many people on that bus or transportation that we could to get into those larger communities. I, I will just tell you that we do not cover our costs with public transit, as you may know. Next year, the state of Minnesota is increasing their public or local share, so next year we will be required to have a 10% match versus the 5% match that we currently have. So currently, our Fairbox revenue is about 8%, so as you can see, we're already operating in deficit, just going in the door for 2026. So my goal is to go and look for that support from the local communities or the counties. Olmsted County has been very gracious, and I just got the notice today, which was awesome, that they are going to help us with the Olmsted County residents, and I'm hopeful that the other counties will, will follow suit. We do have some funding streams from some of the other counties as well, just not at the 2% range that we would like to do.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
Don't hear any. So when is Fillmore County going to make a decision? Have you spoke with them at a meeting yet?
Yeah, so one of the things I'm learning in my job is that our whole state agency goes to the counties and asks us a package deal, so, so I'm not sure when they're going to, I'll make a decision on, you know, what contributions they're going to make to SEMCAC organization and transportation as part of that, so. I would guess, from my past government experience, it's probably going to be fairly soon because budgets, I'm sure, are, are right on that verge of being set, and that's, that's kind of why I'm here tonight, to do a little strategy here, so.
Okay.
Inside trader stuff.
Well, I'm sure you'd love to hear a budget number right now, but we'll think it over and, and maybe try to keep us up to date on what the county does, and then the survey you're going to do, or you're asking us to put that out, or?
So what I'm going to do is I'll prepare the survey, and I'm asking your help to distribute that survey.
Sure.
So what we're, we're going to try to do, and I've, I've worked with Alyssa, I'm going to slather your last name, so I'm just going to refer to you as Alyssa.
Okay.
I apologize for that. So I'm going to work with Alyssa to try to get that, some sort of flyer or some sort of communication that we can get to your residents.
Good.
We'll also do a printed one, too.
Yeah, because we can get it out online and in the city bills and.
Yep.
Probably the phone office might, too.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks.
All right. Let's reschedule the November meeting.
Yeah. So I know I, I had emailed you guys about pushing it to the next day for, so November 11th is the second Tuesday of November, that will be, that's Veterans Day. So I know I asked you guys about pushing it to Wednesday, the 12th, but I did not realize that we are short-staffed. Karen is out the whole week, so I guess I'm asking if there's a possibility of pushing it a week out, so having it on the 18th of November instead. If that would work for your guys' schedules.
Yeah, I know, we don't, we don't pay claims until after a meeting, so does that affect the vendors? Are they going to send us?
I think we should be fine.
Penalties and interest.
I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
True. Yep.
Okay. November 18th. No elections that day, or?
No. I may have a conflict for that day, for that evening. I have my work phone with me, but the 18th might be all for me.
And we can certainly, we can certainly keep it on the 12th. We'll just have to start entering claims right away.
We can't do it at all that week.
It's up to you guys.
I mean, like the 13th, second of the day.
That would help.
Thursday, I mean.
Yep. That is art for that night.
What time is it?
The 13th.
What time do they meet?
Seven to eight. Yep. But could they, could we have them meet in, meet on Thursday?
I'm sure they can change it.
Possibly.
Talk to Lori. Could be possible, they could meet before.
They could meet on Tuesday, because we're not.
Yeah, we could see if they want to meet on Tuesday, then.
See if they want to switch it.
I don't know why she couldn't.
We'll check with her. I'm sure that we can work something out.
All right. I'll make a motion to move our meeting to November 13th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Any more discussion? And in that, you would be asking the Hartz Board to move theirs?
Yep.
Do we never? Tuesday would be a suggestion, but.
Yep.
They could pick whatever they want.
Or they can go an hour before, an hour earlier, whatever, I mean, whatever they come up with.
Correct. I will reach out to them right away.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of changing next month's meeting to the 13th of November, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
Wait a second. Who seconded? Okay. And Mayor was the original?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I have to do things right away. Forget it. All right. Audit service discussion, I think it's pretty well spelled out in the.
Yep.
In the packet. Want to add anything to it, but?
Does anybody have any questions on that? So this last year, we had Smith Schaefer. We, we wanted just to do it for one year at that time, and it was 49,500 is what they charged us. We did reach out, everything went very smoothly. They did give us a proposal for the next three years, so for 2026, they came in at 43,000, so they did drop that price for us. And then every, so if we sign up for three years, it'll be a 5% increase for the next, you know, each year after that, so. They were, they were wonderful to work with. I have to say, they were, it went very well.
I'll make a motion to approve a three-year agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that. Any other discussion? I would add, when we solicited bids or quotes a year ago, how many did we get?
Not very many. Yeah, we only had one or two, I think. Yep. And one of them, we weren't able to go with anyways, so, yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? Fence revision.
So this is something that we've talked about along with the UV plans. The prep work to move it has been done as far as tree removal and all those things. It's really just squaring up that fence. For a couple things, it's to, let me get back to where I need to be. For future, for equipment that needs to come in and do things, we can get access behind the sludge tank, we can get access to the UV house, we can get access to all this stuff without problems. We have that roll that's going in there. It just makes a little more sense. Yes, the original plan just basically extended it back further and then brought an angle to it. This just squares it up more.
And it sounds like what they need today is, they just need, you know, us to give them a call, let them know yes or no that it's okay with us or for them to move forward. Brett said that the pricing will show on the change order request next month.
Okay. So we're just approving it ahead of the change order?
Correct.
I think that sounds good. Anybody opposed to it?
I'll make a motion to go ahead with it.
All right.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the perimeter fence revision. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? And the reports. We talked about, anything to add on the wastewater treatment?
I know we approved the, or it was in the, as the wastewater operators certification. With that, per the contract, comes a grade bump. That's all going to take place, and we'll move forward, and we'll be in discussions with Rick Whitney on his contract and figuring that out. Just to, to let you guys know, we're looking at keeping Rick on for Corey's benefit for some months, but we don't know what that is going to look like just.
Roughly six months, maybe?
Yeah. And it sounds like what they need today is they just need, you know, us to give them a call, let them know yes or no that it's okay with us or for them to move forward. Brett said that the pricing will show on the change order request next month.
Okay, so we're just approving it ahead of the change order?
Correct.
I think that sounds good. Anybody opposed to it?
I'll make a motion to go ahead with it.
All right.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the perimeter fence revision. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We talked about, anything to add on the wastewater treatment?
I know we approved the, or it was in the, best is the wastewater operators certification. With that, per the contract, comes a grade bump. That's all going to take place, and we'll move forward, and we'll be in discussions with Rick Whitney on his contract and figuring that out. Just to let you guys know, we're looking at keeping Rick on for Corey's benefit for some months, but we don't know what that is going to look like just.
Roughly six months, maybe?
Yeah, roughly six months. What that cost is going to be, we're going to try, obviously, to reduce our cost and that. So we're going to talk to Rick, and we'll come back to you with the final approval of what we come up with.
Anything special from the EDA?
We worked with StanTech to map out, like a plat design for the sinkholes for the remaining lots in the industrial park, so we can kind of lay that out for plotting around them, I guess, for any more open lots. Everything else should be in your report, other than that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Grants being sought out, I guess.
A park board meeting?
We did. Basically, discussions surrounding the grant, opportunities to update or redo the Trailhead Park. So we're going to keep moving forward with that to see what grants we would qualify for and get. Thanks for Katrina to putting that list together and helping out there. Otherwise, we move forward to repair the lawnmower that was having issues, and that was about it.
Okay. Harmony Chamber?
After she gets done, we have Kara here for the library.
Yep. She's here.
He likes to skip that one.
He does.
Well, we know we're important. So Fall for Harmony took place on Saturday, September 20th. It was a fun day with perfect weather and a great turnout downtown for the Harmony businesses, thanks to everybody who took part in the event. Haunted Harmony is coming up on Saturday, October 25th. Trunk Retreat still has spaces available. Both businesses and residents are able to set up. So email thechamber@exploreharmony.com to reserve your space. Planning is currently underway for Breakfast with Santa, the tree lighting at Selvick Park, and Holidays in Harmony. The membership and event coordinator we hired last month rescinded their acceptance for a position closer to where they live. We opened up our search again and had some great applicants, and a new membership and event coordinator begins on Friday. I'm not going to say their name until they start. Our membership drive is well underway. The deadline for the early bird raid is October 31st. Remember, you don't have to own a business to be a member. We also have individual, family, and senior and nonprofit memberships. So keep that in mind. If you get the opportunity to pick up a Minnesota Monthly magazine, you should. For this fall, Harmony did place an ad in there, and we've also got a little blurb about us, so that's kind of cool. We paid for that with ladies' night bingo money, so.
Cool.
We currently have one seat open on our chamber board. Maybe it's been a while since you served on the board, or perhaps you haven't served yet. The chamber needs a dedicated and active board to thrive, and we'd love to have your perspective, skills, and energy. Please email director@exploreharmony.com if you're interested in learning more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Library Board, here's Kara.
Hi, I'm Kara McCoy, the new library director here at Harmony. New things from the library this month include installation, running of security cameras. We have our suggestion and concern box for patrons and anybody who comes in to use. The code of conduct policy is in effect, and the hours of operation have returned to normal, and I want to give a big thank you to Alyssa, Sue, and Elena for all their hard work keeping the library running smoothly with no director. And we also have a one opening at our board at the end of December, and we're accepting letters of interest for that, so.
All right. Well, welcome aboard. Did the Arts Board meet?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, we met, talked about how the, that Green Day went. Art on the green. I was out of town, but they're looking at possibly doing a tree lighting residential contest. We're doing that.
Yep.
And then there's going to be a, I didn't come very prepared, there's going to be a movie. Yeah. I could find it here on my, I didn't know, I didn't know you were going to make me do this. Okay. Well, I'm learning, I'm learning. So we voted to do pizzas for the students at the Monster Bash. We'll also be donating outdoor easels to the Fillmore Central Preschool. We're organizing two back-to-back showings of Spirit of the Driftless, preserving our legacy at the Gem Theater on November 1st. It's newly released local documentary by sustainable Driftless organization Admission will be free, will be a free will donation to support the mission of this organization. Follow the City of Harmony Arts Board on Facebook for details. We're thinking about putting a public mural on a building. If you've got a plan, bring it to the Arts Board or an Arts Board meeting. A residential holiday lights contest. The young girls from the school come up with a little bit of the themes. They're going to do winter whites, holly, jolly, red and green, National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation, and the judging will take place on Friday, December 5th at 6:00 PM. Winners will be announced at the holiday tree lighting at Selvick Park on Saturday, December 6th at 6:00 PM. Each winner from three categories will win 150 Harmony dollars.
That's the best Arts Board report we had in a while.
She wrote it.
Thanks, Erica.
Thanks, Erica.
Did you say we have somebody lined up to do a mural, or you're looking for?
No, that has been, that's been a discussion since I've been on Arts Board about where should we put a mural? What could it be? What could it be? Designs and those types of things, and we just never came up with a good spot or an idea.
We did put up like a checklist on the City of Harmony Arts Board page, so if anybody's got any ideas, the considerations are there, like whose space and how much it's going to cost, and who's the artist, and who owns it, that type of thing. So if you've got a plan, bring it to the Arts Board. We would love to help support something, but we're not going to organize it and do the whole thing. We can support it, and we can help with the nonprofit status and grants and that type of thing, and fundraising, but we just can't do the whole big thing.
Some of the murals in the southeast Minnesota have gotten the paint from Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, Paint the Town Grant, and they give out quite a few of those, so hopefully the Arts Board can.
I mean, Fulton has one.
Check. Anything from the Fire Department? Anything from the Fire Department?
No.
Sheriff's report is attached?
Yep.
We won't make anybody read that?
Well, you can read it.
Go for it. Yep.
And we're just announcing that December 9th council meeting will be the 2025 Truth and Taxation hearing?
Correct.
Anything else?
It's hard to believe that it's already that time of the year that we're starting to think about summer things already. Yep, nothing else.
Anybody else have anything for our meeting? If not, we're, oh.
Just want to say, support the referendum for the school.
Oh, I would.
That, you know, we need to have good education for our kids, and it affects everybody, and it is just an operating level that hasn't been known for a while, so please support it if you can.
And when we have a meeting where we're talking a little bit about economic development, I would say the school is a huge key in the City of Harmony. To have the high school here is very beneficial, and I hope all the citizens and residents appreciate it and support it. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, Erica.